Box forty-four, Bohm.
Three minutes, right?
Yes.
Evening. I see there's a lot of the bad apples at this county in house tonight, so that's interesting. Real quick, Mr. Samasco, I've been asked by some members of the community, they are concerned that in your return to the commission now, your first move was to limit public comment by we can't, you know, give our three minutes and stuff. And it kind of rubs some people the wrong way, and it seems like you might want to be trying to silence the community, and it just came off the wrong way to some people, you know, and, you know, we only get three minutes and, you know, there's a lot, you probably do so much in three minutes. So just something to be aware of, whatever. My next issue is Mr. Bohm, and I talked about Mr. Bohm's private bar that he has in St. Clair and all that. This past weekend, Mr. Bohm, and by all accounts, he controls that building. It's supposed to be a community center, but he's kind of the guy that runs it. This past weekend, he had a bunch of his buddies running around that community center with a bunch of alcohol, beer, liquor, while there were a bunch of fifteen and sixteen-year-old girls practicing volleyball there, and his buddies spent some time watching these girls practice volleyball. It's highly inappropriate, and it's time for you to tighten up, Jeff, and grow up. You and your creepy band of dudes is just, you know, go hang out with your wives, you know? Leave these girls alone, stay away from them. Quit utilizing a community center as your own personal speakeasy. It's really weird, you know, and I know this happened because I had parents of these girls reach out to me and identify the people you had there, and they were very concerned that a bunch of grown men were walking around drunk in a community center while their young teenage girls were having a volleyball practice. So you might want to talk to your friends, or you might want to find a better place to, uh, to drink at. You know, you have your house, you know, you used to drink there all the time. Maybe go back to throwing parties there and, you know, let this community center be for the community, not for Jeff Bohm's, uh, party spot. You know, and you still haven't said anything about your gym either and the pedophile there that was, um, you know, filming everybody. You might want to, you know, grow a set and address that instead of letting your general manager be the one that's got to, you know, do all that. It's just, you know, you're a community leader, start acting like it, Jeff, you know? This whole frat boy stuff you got going on, it's become just tiresome, really. And, uh, you know, stop drinking and driving in our community too, because sooner or later you're going to injure somebody, and then the entire county's going to be responsible for your bullshit. And that's not really fair to us, you know? Your behavior is atrocious, and it's time for you to start acting like the grown-up that you are. See you in two weeks.
Okay, uh, Megan Kelly, two nine nine three, Wedge Woods for Crash It, uh, wages.
Good evening. So my name is Megan Lava Kelly. I have been working at the St. Clair County Prosecutor's Office for nearly six years. I handle the criminal sexual conduct or the special victims unit cases. And, um, I remember my experience colleagues telling me that these are the toughest cases to handle, even more difficult than murder. And you don't really truly understand what that means until you're listening to children talk about, um, physical and sexual abuse on a weekly, sometimes daily basis. It isn't until you have to question a child about abuse in front of a panel of jurors that you begin to notice not only how difficult these cases are to prove to jurors, but how you actually take that work home with you. Whether it's working at home to prepare for trial, or communicating with families after hours, or waking up in the middle of the night worrying about these cases, the victims, the families. And I say this because it's not something that you just turn off at four thirty P.M. I do this job because I love helping people. It can be very rewarding, and most of all, I love knowing that I work alongside people that have the same passion about raising our families in a safe community. So I'd like to continue seeing those same passionate, dedicated prosecutors working in our office without turnover or worrying that they're going to leave to a county that perhaps pays more. So I guess what I'm asking is that the board allows some sort of comparative wage analysis so that we can make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
Ashley Stone, play retention.
Good evening. So like Ms. Lava Kelly, I am a prosecutor in our county's prosecuting office. I've been here a little less time, a little over two years now. During the time I have been here, I have seen two people who came before me leave, and they have left to other counties and other counties' prosecutors' office. And they've left because they can make more money, maybe because it's more logistical for them, maybe because it's closer to home. None of them left because they didn't like the job. I think you're going to find, like Ms. Kelly and like myself, we do this job because it matters. I do this job because it matters. I know we say we come in at eight thirty to four thirty, and our, our work week is a thirty-seven-and-a-half-hour week, but I don't know any of us that only work thirty-seven-and-a-half hours a week. We take it home in various ways, and it's a hard job, but we do it because we like this community. And I've heard it said that that's why we do the job, right? It's a great community, I have great colleagues, I really enjoy the people that I work with. I couldn't ask for a more dedicated, experienced, exceptional team to work with. But frankly, at some point, experience, dedication, a great work environment, nice people do not pay my bills. The reality is, is that you are going to have new prosecutors, young prosecutors, experienced prosecutors that want to live and work in this community but can't, because the reality is, is that finances do matter. And it's hard to make a decision not to go elsewhere, particularly at a point in career like I am, where I could go elsewhere, I could go back to private practice, there are other options. And as much as I would like to stay here because of the community, because I like the people I work with, finances are just a reality that we live with. And so like Ms. Kelly, and like I think you'll hear from some of my other colleagues, I am asking that you guys consider doing a wage study, consider looking at why we are losing people to other nearby counties, because I'd like to stay here. I'd like to continue supporting this community. I just don't know if I can make that be a reality way we have our current wage, excuse me, our current wage structure. So thank you.
Josh Barling, wage analysis.
Good evening. I'm sure you can't guess why I'm here at this point after hearing from a couple of my coworkers that I work with. I think what we all have in common, I hope what we all have in common, is to make St. Clair County or to keep St. Clair County the great environment it is to live and to work. I've, I want to be clear right up at the front here. This is not some kind of back-end runaround, some contract negotiation or anything of that.
If you could just stand up there so the other people can hear you a little better, because I can hear you better.
Sure, sorry about that. So this is not some kind of contract negotiation, I want to make that vividly clear. I was advised by H.R. when we brought up this comparative wage analysis, this was the correct venue to do so. The reason why I do so is because it's been over five years since we've had one, and what is marked since then is the rate of inflation that's just skyrocketing. It's at eight point seven percent. I'm sure all of you have been grocery shopping or know the price of eggs, milk, and everything of that nature. Literally, our groceries are going up, just like everybody else in this county, by, you know, depending on whether you calculate eggs in or not, it's up to almost forty percent. These are real things, and the problem here is this is not a prosecutor problem. We're here tonight, we didn't want to, I've been in contact with pretty much every organization in the courthouse. We've talked to them, we've talked to library folks, we've talked to Parks and Rec, from janitors to I.T.s to us. We're here because you, you guys have a real gift here in St. Clair County, and that's people that love the place they live, and they work, as, as Ashley said here, way more than what they're supposed to. I can't tell you a week that I've logged less than sixty hours in the last couple of years doing the Drug Task Force and Major Crimes Unit cases. That doesn't happen. We have a couple of Drug Task Force guys here, we have the Sheriff's Department here. They, they made a record-breaking amount of doors last year. Why is that? Because drugs and crime are exploding through the roof. Our office has dealt with over four thousand victims in the last two years, since twenty twenty. I don't have to convince you that this stuff is important. The, the crime is real, what we do is real, and we love what we do. However, there is a tipping point here. We have young attorneys here that are on a completely different wage scale than some of us other ones. So in the last nine months, I've done three capital cases, and they're going to be expected to do the same things, yet we have to look at them and say, but you're not going to make as much money because you're on a different scale. That completely cuts the morale in our office. I, I can tell you it utterly and completely kills it. I know I'm running short on time, I'm watching it very closely, but what is, what to take away? The, the feds, the Social Security, they've matched the eight point seven percent. All these comparative counties that we've looked at, a lot of them have done market rate adjustments of five percent and still done the COLA at the end of the year. You've got the federal law enforcement that's given their people four point seven-five percent market rate adjustment. The thing here is, we have a lot of other places, Wayne County for God's sake.
I did, I did interrupt you, so please wrap it up.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Rushing. There, there, you're seeing all these counties appreciate and take into account and stock this inflation rate. So I'm asking you, what we're all asking you to do, we're not going to sit here and all take three minutes on you, but know that every single person here, that's what we're asking our board to do, is to look into this and make a promise that you're going to do this. And at the end of the day, just look at these employees that you have and pay them what they're worth. You know, I take that last part back. You, you can't afford them. I'm telling you that right now, you can't afford them, don't pay them what they're worth. Just pay them enough where they can put some gas in their car and go buy those eggs that are six dollars a dozen.
Denise Rickett. Denise Rickett.
That'll be Dennis, but thank you. I'm also.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said Denise, I did, sorry, Dennis.
No problem. I'm also assistant prosecutor. I've been here, I'm in my fifth year, and when I got here, there was a time when I could say that I was the oldest and the newest prosecutor in the office. I came from a background where I'm a retired police officer in Mount Clemens. After, that was nineteen years ago, I retired, and then I did fifteen years of criminal defense work, and then I came here and took this job. I took a pay cut to come here. I'm glad I came here, I like the people I work with, I like our bosses, and that's the reason I'm still here today. But my discussion falls in also on the, kind of the retention thing, but to show you an example, the differential pay scale that I'm on with people in my office. At the end of this year, or near the end of this year, when I complete my fifth year, I will have made forty-five thousand dollars less than some of the older or the people that have been here longer than me. Forty-five thousand dollars in five years less than what a prosecutor that's been here longer than me would have made. This year alone, I'm making sixteen thousand less, and I'm in charge of one of the circuit courts doing felony trials, so I'm doing exactly what they are. And forty-five thousand dollars in five years is not chump change. Next year, it's going to be thirteen thousand less than what they're making. So it's something to, I'm asking you to keep in mind for retention reasons, because our pay scales are like this. We've already given up a ton of money with these lower pay scales, and when people come into this building and interview, and I've had prosecutors from other counties that I know that have interviewed here recently that were offered a job and said, I can't afford to come there, not on that pay scale. And that's sad, so you're, you're not only having troubles with retention, but you're having troubles with getting people to come here in the first place. Shortly after we signed our contract in December, an article came out in Macomb Daily. "Macomb County Employees Average Eight Percent Pay Increase Next Year." The reason, the county is trying to play catch-up with other counties. And if you look through it, this article mentions, "Most county employees will receive an average wage increase of about eight percent next year." And then it says, "The heightened pay is designed to encourage employee retention and improve recruitment in a competitive work environment." This county, not just like Josh said with the prosecutor's office, but with other offices, are losing people or getting people who are turning down job offers here. They're looking elsewhere. And I'm not going to be here in fifteen years, I'm not going to, you know, I've put in a career already, but I'm more concerned about the young people, because if you add up that loss of pay every year, they're going to put in twenty years, twenty-five years here, they're going to lose out on over a hundred thousand dollars just on the two different pay scales. So I'd ask you to keep that in mind next time we come up, and I'm sure we're going to be approaching you again prior to next negotiations. Thank you for your time.
Kalen Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Kalen Wilson, I've been an assistant prosecuting attorney for seventeen years. I've worked in two counties under three elected prosecuting attorneys. I've been here for five years. I've never asked for recognition for the work that I do. I didn't ask for special notice when I worked on Christmas Eve, when I came in Monday and worked on Martin Luther, even though nobody else did, when I put my kids in bed and then did three more hours of work before going to sleep to get up in the morning to do it again. In my entire career, I don't believe that I have ever asked for recognition, for a raise, for a promotion. I'll tell you very honestly, money has never been that important to me. I do this job because I love it. I do this job because it's important. I've always expected that if I did absolutely the best job that I possibly could do, that that would just be recognized, that I would be treated fairly by my employer, and that I wouldn't need to call attention to myself. And I'm pleased that in my career, that has been the case. Until this past contract negotiation, I have never in my life felt so insulted, demeaned, or underappreciated as I was copied on emails between the union and the county. The county sent a very clear message that we're not important, that our ideas don't matter, our needs don't matter, our suggestions are not worth considering, that the county put forth a single proposal, and that if we didn't like it, we should pack our bags and work elsewhere. I don't want to pack my bags and work elsewhere. I want to work here with these people and protect this community. I know that there are new faces on the board who were not here when all of this occurred, and I know that none of you would have intended to communicate this to any county employee. But I felt that this is important, that this was worth yet another evening away from my small children, to come and tell you the effect that the attitude and the communication about contract negotiation is having, and to ask that you consider what possible steps could be taken to prevent this kind of message to be given in the future.
Okay, moving on. Item eleven, unfinished business, there is none this evening. Item number twelve, item A, approval of county dispersments for November twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November twenty-two county dispersments in the amount of thirteen million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and four cents.
Support, Beeden.
Discussion on any of those. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item B.
This time, I move to approve the December twenty-two county dispersments in the amount of fifteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item C.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the subcontract for the Mental Health Court with Blue Water D.R.P. LLC for a term of October first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars.
Support, Baldwin.
Discussion. Just for some of the new commissioners, a lot of these are just annual grants that you will see that will come before you on a regular basis, so, um, anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item D.
This time, I move to approve the letter of agreement between the Mental Health Court, St. Clair County Community and Health Authority, and with the term of ten, one of twenty-two, through nine, thirty, twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item E.
This time, I move to approve the subcontract between the Mental Health Court and the hearing house for a term of ten, one, twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item F.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following individuals to Homeland Security Advisory Council. Do I have to list it? You need them all?
As presented.
As presented.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G, the professional service agreement, Kimball Township, master plan update, excuse me.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Kimball Township to update the township's master plan in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Dave, can I have you up here for a second? Kind of explain a little bit about what you guys do for the individual townships and stuff.
Yeah, so as I said in the report, from time to time, we will get asked by local communities to help them, you know, with a master plan update, it might be a Parks and Recreation Plan update, zoning ordinance, things of that nature. You know, we don't actively seek out contractual work, we do not respond to any sort of RFP process when our communities do put them out. You know, right now, I think I mentioned that Kimball Township actually did do an RFP process. They sent it out to six consulting firms, put it online, put it on social media. They got one response back basically saying that the firm was not going to submit a proposal. So at that point, they had nobody to do the work, so they contacted planning to see if we could help them out. So we provided a scope of work and a timeline, and basically, we spread these out over the course of a year to be able to do this, and so, you know, I provided you with an addendum to that agreement as well that kind of lays out what we would do for them. Essentially, we kind of managed the public engagement process, we'll work with their local planning commission to kind of go through that planning process and end up with a document that works for them, so. And over the years, we have done this in the past where, in some cases, some of the communities have staffed people, whether, you know, it might be a recreation director that, that's there, that can do some of the heavy lifting. So, you know, it really varies from community to community as far as what the overall scope of that project is. In some cases, a community may just want a light update where they're updating, you know, data and some of the maps and things like that, and in other cases, it might be a bigger project. You know, we've done, we've done some in, in the past where, you know, a plan hadn't been updated since nineteen seventy-eight. So as you can imagine, that takes a little bit more work for the process, so.
David.
Being a previous township supervisor, serving on the Planning Commission, I've worked with Dave Struck and the Metro Planning for three master plans for Riley Township, and the cost that they give the various townships to do this, and their expertise saves a ton of money for each individual township, and they're getting it correct. And there's a lot of statutory things that are required by that, and also that includes your surrounding communities getting that, and the public here and everything. I could go on and on, but they do a fantastic job, and it's a great saving to our community.
Okay, anything, Steve?
Looking at your brief report, you note in there, quote, "The township did not receive any proposals to carry out the projected, you know, RFP." Is that, is that common? That they would, is there a lot of that going on? Because we, on the heels of prosecutors' associations, and here, they're all professionals, you know, they're saying people are leaving, people aren't coming, and here, I'm looking the next item up as a professional work is available in the county and nobody wants it? I mean, what's that?
Well, that's, and that's actually a discussion that came up at the Planning Commission meeting as well. And I will say that over the past few years, there's been a noticeable decrease in, in a presence of consulting firms in our county.
What do you attribute that to? I mean, is that because the county's a lousy place to be, or is that because?
No, in fact, I actually talked to a consultant that, that does this, you know, they work with communities all over the state, and I, and it's, it's an issue that is affecting a lot of other industries right now. I mean, there's staffing issues, and as you might imagine, there's a lot of, obviously, federal funding going around right now, so communities are.
Better-paying federal work, that's some of it?
No, I think they're just short-staffed, and there's more and more communities are having to update plans to get in line for some of this funding that's, that's out there, and the cost for them to do, to do business has gone up as well. And so they, you know, they look at a project, and it's like, do we have the capacity to do this right now? And they either submit a proposal or they don't. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, thanks, David.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item H.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Lake Shore Legal Aid for Senior Services for a term of January one of twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-four, in the amount not to exceed seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Support, Beeden.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item I.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Visiting Nurses Association for Senior Services for a term of January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item J.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Council on Aging for Senior Services for a term of one, one twenty-three, through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed nine million, forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Support, Beeden.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item K.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Hunter House, Hunter Hospitality House for Senior Services for a term of January one of twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes, item L.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Blue Water Safe Horizons for Senior Services for a term of January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Support, Baldwin.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item M.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreements with Burling Township,
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreements with Burling Township, Emmett Township, and the City of Yale for ambulance, millage, distribution, each for the term January 1, '23 through December 31st, 2026.
Support.
So just, just some clarification, I guess, on the ambulance, millage, or carry. So TriHospital runs 90% of the service, right? So like the city of Marysville, for example, that has their own ambulance service, they would, they would still get a portion of the, the millage, their, I guess, their portion or, or how, how does that work?
So how the millage was structured is each local unit will receive the amount of millage that was collected in their community to be used exclusively for ambulance services. So, you know, as part of the millage, the county is not controlling who their provider is, who they choose to contract with, or if they choose to provide the service in-house. It just lays out the terms of how the funds will be distributed and guarantees that the funds we do distribute will be spent on ambulance services per the millage language.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bone?
Yes. Item N?
This time I move to approve the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, an application for the Blue Water Convention Center for the Edison Social District.
Support, Beeden.
Gino, you want to get up there? I see you. Talk a little bit about it.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, it's pretty simple. They started in the, during COVID downtown with the social district. Then the city added down by freighters and the convention center. So now people can take their drinks down by the boardwalk. And although unlike freighters where they'd have more of an immediate, obvious need for and like for it, I'm just looking at a tie-in for us. It's a, it's just a, it's a $70 inspection fee and a $250 application fee for something that we can now look for ways to do things. And we're actually in talks with freighters about trying to even connect the two outside areas so that it would be more of a joint thing so that if we did something on our patio, then people could go down by the, by the boardwalk in the warmer weather. And even during weddings and things like that, right now, I sort of have to guard people from leaving and now it's allowed.
Yeah, we've actually had one in St. Clair for a couple of years now and it's worked well. There's been no problems or issues with it at all, so. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?[1277.66]